Okay, I'd like to call to order the City of Camarillo's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, 2024. And Mr. Secretary, will you take role, please?
Chair Murphy?
Here.
Chair Vandermeulen?
Here.
Chair Davidson?
Here.
Commissioner Etzel?
Here.
Okay, and we'll stand for the flag salute. Mr. Murphy, will you lead us, please?
Yes. Anyone face the flag, please? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, for which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then the next item on tonight's agenda is the consent calendar. Is there any questions on that, or would entertain a motion to present the consent items?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vandermeulen, second by Commissioner Davidson. Please vote, or take the vote.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
And Chair Etzel?
Yes. Okay, next we move to the next item on the agenda, which is the public comment section. And this is the time of the meeting where anybody can come forward and speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. So is there anybody that has anything to come and talk about that's not on the agenda? Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close that public comment section. And then we'll get right into our item B, the LD 554, put on by CCE Design Associates, Inc. We'll get a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we were supposed to have Brett, this was his project, our assistant planner, but he actually had scheduled vacation. So tonight, instead, we've had our intern, Ricardo, here step up, and he's got himself all schooled up on the subdivision map act and this project, and he is ready to present the project to you tonight. So Ricardo, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ricardo Kozak, an intern with the Community Development Department. And tonight, I will be presenting land division 554, submitted by CCE Design Associates. Beginning with the project request, the applicant is seeking approval of a tentative parcel map to subdivide an existing parcel that is just shy of an acre into three parcels. Looking at the project location, the project site is located at 260 Mission Drive, on a parcel that is designated low-density residential, five dwelling units per acre maximum by the Camarillo General Plan, and is zoned, single-family residential, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, by the city's municipal code. Moving into the project description, the proposed project will comply with the requirements of the single-family residential zone by exceeding the minimum lot width, depth, and area requirements, because lots one and two will be 118 by 100 feet, for a total square footage of 11,800 square feet, and lot three will be 118 by 147 feet, for a total square footage of 17,346 square feet, which all comply with the minimally required 80-foot width, 100-foot depth, and 10,000 square feet lot area standards. The existing single-family home at the site will remain on proposed lot three. To preserve the home with the reoriented setbacks caused by this project, and to allow the subdivision to occur without creating a non-conforming situation with the required setbacks, a new 534-square-foot accessory dwelling unit has been approved at the northern portion of the existing home. ADUs are allowed with four-foot setbacks for the side and rear yards, so the existing home will be able to meet all reoriented setbacks with the completion of this ADU. It is important to note that one of the project conditions for the project is the requirement that the ADU is fully constructed prior to the recording of the final parcel map. You will see here that if we look at the original lot, the lot size is large, around just under an acre, and the front yard faces west, the side yard faces north and south, and the rear yard faces east. The single-family residence is shown here without the addition with a 10-foot side yard setback, and a greater than 100-foot rear yard setback, as shown with the arrows. Looking at the proposed tentative parcel map, there will be, as you can see in blue, five-foot public right-of-way dedication along Mission Drive frontage, which will host a future sidewalk and undergrounded utilities and the unimproved surface between the existing street. In yellow, you'll see the new sidewalk will receive a pavement treatment along the entire frontage. Next, you'll see that the project will feature the extension of the sewer main on Mission Drive that currently ends just shy of Nancy Street, south of the project site, all the way to the intersection of Nish Street and Mission Drive just north of the project site. Additionally, the project will develop a new 18-foot-wide common-access driveway, serving all three parcels, which will also feature undergrounded common-access utilities lines, such as water, gas, and sewer, which will be maintained through an infrastructure easement. Next, we see lot one here, which will front Mission Drive. We also see lot two, which is the same size of 11,800 square feet. And lastly, we see lot three, which is the largest of the three, and will feature, as you can see in blue, the existing single-family dwelling in addition to a previously approved accessory dwelling unit. Staff finds that the proposed project is exempt from CEQA under a Class 15 minor land division exemption. Staff recommends to the planning commission that they find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA, and recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving land division 554, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And that concludes staff's presentation on the item. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ricardo. Are there any questions of Commissioners for staff?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
None for me, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Vandermeulen?
I, yes. How far north of this does the county line start?
The county line, as shown, the two, let me use this arrow here. These two properties right here are in the county. They were not annexed into the City of Camarillo, so I could say zero feet from this property, which is the tentative parcel. This property here and this property here are in the county, not in the city, if that answers your question.
But the ones in front are still in the city?
Correct. So this property here is in the city, and these properties adjacent to the street, Mission Drive, are also in the city. But this property and this property are county. They were not annexed into the City of Camarillo.
And what about when you're going north on Mission Drive or Road?
North on Mission Drive, the majority of the properties are in the City of Camarillo.
Okay.
Including this property here.
This entire area has a lot of jagged jogs in and out of the property lines, so also the property to the east, directly behind the property, is also in the county. So it's got a lot of counties surrounding this individual property.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I just want to confirm that the ADU is to be basically built first and with certificate of occupancy, and that ADU will not be required any of the off-site improvements, the five-foot widening along the road, and the sewer extension up Mission. Is that true?
So the, an ADU is a ministerial project, be by state law, and so, yes, it is, it will not require any of the improvements other than the ADU itself. So the ADU is allowed ministerially, and they've actually pulled the building permits for that today, and can start construction on it basically immediately.
Okay, that's great. So it's pretty much independent of the remainder of what will be, what may be, the development of all three parcels?
That, that's correct. It was, it was just necessary in order for it to be able, for the project to be able to comply with the setbacks with the new orientation of the front, side, and rear yards on that third parcel.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question, too. On some of the ones that are in the city, north of that, beyond the sewer extension, are they allowed to have septic? Aren't they required to tie into the sewer if they're going to be annexed?
The property... I will defer the question.
Okay.
The question was, would other properties be allowed to tie into the sewer? Is that correct?
Well, if some of them are in the city above that, it looks like that's past where the sewer line extends to. So are there some that are on septic now that?
Uh, yeah, that area is in septic. When this development puts in the sewer, properties that are adjacent to that sewer line would be able to connect to the sewer, going through the appropriate permitting and fee process.
And on this particular subdivision before us, it would be required to tie into the sewer, right, as part of the approval?
Yes, it's conditioned to install the sewer and bring the sewer up that access road to access all three parcels.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, would you kind of restate if I missed? What is the backyard requirement, the minimum backyard requirement in this area that we had to put in the ADU?
So, as you can see on the last slide, right here, the original lot, which is R-1-10,000, 10,000 square foot minimum, for a single-family residence as shown here, which is a single-family and a single-story, this area right here needs to have a 20-foot rear yard setback, and the front needs to have a 20-foot rear yard setback. In this configuration, it complies. However, once we subdivide it into three lots, you'll see that the house, sorry if I'm too loud, you'll see that the house is right here, but unfortunately, it doesn't meet that requirement because the setback right here is too small. So by adding the accessory dwelling unit, as shown there in magenta, an accessory dwelling unit only needs to meet four-foot side and rear yard setbacks, which it complies with.
Okay, the 20 feet was what I was looking for.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, I'm sorry to do it. So the, I'm looking at the shaded boxes, and it does not appear that the ADU goes any closer to that wall and simply by virtue of putting it there brings in that, that's a different setback requirement. It's not going to actually get any closer, but based on this drawing, it's not going to get any closer to that property line. It's just by virtue of building it again.
Correct, because if you look, see in blue, a portion of the ADU overlaps.
Yeah.
So yes, it doesn't actually get closer. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Okay, if no more questions, then we'll open the public hearing. And is the applicant here who'd like to speak first? And if anybody wants to speak, I don't know if they filled out speaker cards, that you have some? Okay.
Good evening. Randy Chapman, CCE Design Associates is the applicant. And we've got the property owner and the architect here as well. We do not have a presentation. We are here available to answer questions, and Ricardo did a great job of presenting to us, so.
There any questions of the applicant?
I don't.
Okay, there may be later, but you can sit down. Thanks very much. And then, did you have some speaker cards you sent? No? Is there anybody that would like to speak on this? Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question about the...
Well, you can, please come up to the mic, just so they can do it. And then, when you're finished, you have to do a speaker card.
Yeah, hi. I have a question on how you're going to work the septic. As I understand it, the ADU has to be built and occupied prior to the project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, what about the septic, then? Is the, is the ADU going to tie into the existing septic?
Yeah. What, what we'll do, I think, is get all the questions in the public hearing, and then when we close it, we'll have staff answer all the questions. So your questions about the septic and the existing septic?
Yeah, I'd like to see how you're going to work the septic for the ADU.
Okay, so that'll, that'll be explained, I guess, at the close of the public hearing, so.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anybody else that came tonight that'd like to speak, either for or against the project? Maybe I do have a... Hi. And if you could take your name for the record?
My name's Peggy Whitaker, and I live on Nancy Street, and I've lived there all my life. And I'm wondering about traffic, because the traffic is horrendous. We've got the church, we've got the school, we've got cars going up and down, we've got, it's just, that's my concern, is the traffic.
Okay.
And if we put this in, guess what? I can't even get out my driveway sometimes because of the school, from the church, and I, and they're not kind about letting me in. So, traffic.
We'll have staff respond to that, uh, once we close the public...
Thank you for letting me...
And you also sent an email, I think, that will...
Yes, I did.
Enter in the record, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Thanks for your input. And is anybody else tonight that would like to speak on this matter? Yes.
My name is Cassie Bright. I live on Grace Court, which is a 20-year-old similar development. And we have a sidewalk in front of our development, and I was really glad to see there will be a sidewalk here. And I'm wondering what the timeline on completing that. And because, as we already spoke here, about county, city, county, city in the Heights, we're missing sidewalks on Mission Drive, especially with an excellent elementary school up there. And then kids also riding their bikes down Mission Drive to go to Montevista, a little bit further away. Who's the jurisdiction who will deal with that, that issue? Especially, I'm not opposed necessarily to the project, but I think we're developing, we need more housing, we also need more infrastructure, like sidewalks, to improve our community.
Yeah, those are great questions, and I think someone in staff will be prepared to answer that when we close it. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get all of those for you.
I have one more point, which is...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
I've been there a while, so I'm observing a lot of things around, which, another item is the removal of mature trees in the Heights. And I don't know if the Audubon Society or the Raptor Center in Ojai could comment on this, but I know a few lots away from us, they remove multiple mature trees. And I'm wondering, yeah, who is the, again, the jurisdiction or the authority regarding mature trees, which provides shade and habitat, and I think other, yeah, other beneficial things to our community? That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you for your input. Anybody else want to speak on this item tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and then if we could have staff address some of those.
So I'll begin with the, the church, the trees. So in the City of Camarillo, trees on properties are private trees. They're not protected. There's no tree ordinance in the City of Camarillo. So in this event, the mature trees will be up to whether or not the applicant wants to remove them. Some of the mature trees will have to be removed in order to make way for the common-access driveway. But there will also, with this project, be a landscaping plan that comes back on each one of the developments, and in that landscaping plan, additional landscaping and trees that are all appropriate for the environment and drought-tolerant will be installed onto the property. And then I believe that we'll have Carl discuss the septic system.
Okay.
Yeah, the question, the ADU will be allowed to connect to the existing septic system. Once the subdivision is done and the sewer is brought up that access road, the sewer will be connected to the existing structure, including the ADU, and the septic system will need to be abandoned.
Can I answer your question? Okay, great.
I have one question related to that. Did they, do we, did they have to have it, just the certificate of occupancy, or actually be occupied before they can get the?
It just needs a certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just to follow up on the, on the birds and stuff, sometimes we see that in development, but that's, there's no biological report or anything required for?
This being exempt from CEQA, there's no biological report required.
Okay, and that in either the county property or the city, or is that just?
Correct. Because it's state law, CEQA state law, and it is a categorical exemption under state law, then there wouldn't be any requirement for CEQA on this.
Oh, yes, the question about the sidewalk?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have Public Works respond to those as well.
Yeah, this development is conditioned to do the street improvements along the frontage, including the sidewalk. And this would be typical of any other, any properties on that street that would subdivide. So you'll see some properties up there that do have the sidewalk, some don't. As far as having sidewalk up the entire length of Mission Drive, that would be something that'd be a, a project that the city would need to look at or consider in their capital improvement project program.
And then she asks about the timing of it. Would they, when, when they pull a building permit, they'd be required to?
Yeah, we're, we don't know, we're not in control of the timing of the construction. Once it gets the approval, then I have to go through plans and permitting. Possibly the applicant can speak to that.
I would say, um... With the timing of the construction, plus getting plans, permits, et cetera, it's probably, best case, six to 12 months.
But, yeah, and you would do that, like, right away, the sidewalk? Is that?
The sidewalk would need to be completed before the final map is approved, so before you could actually legally subdivide, that would have to be done.
Okay.
Correct.
Didn't, didn't I read that, like, all this, the underground improvements and stuff have to be on the street, going up the street and in before a lot of this can be done, as far as? I couldn't remember if all that had to be done before the lot lines were recorded, or?
Yeah, that is correct, because those are all conditions of the, of the subdivision.
Yeah.
So.
So, so a lot of that, you know, for underground infrastructure work, and even possibly the sidewalk, will be done up front?
That is correct. Yes.
Much else is done?
Ultimately, the property owner, it's really depends on what the property owner chooses to do, because all that's really before you tonight is the subdivision itself. Each one of the parcels can actually then, once this is done and the final map is recorded, the permits, or that the property will then be subdivided, and the applicant can choose to sell each lot off individually and allow a custom home to be built on it, or he can choose to develop each one of the lots himself with a custom home. But all of that stuff, that the homes themselves actually will be ministerial through the planning department.
But as far as, like, the road and then all the utilities that go under the driveway?
All of that will have to be done.
And all of that on Mission will be done prior to that?
Correct.
Yeah, everything on Mission and the utilities coming up the driveway to the house, and then stubbing to the two proposed lots as well.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
And then last, we're going to have Jason Simontae speak on the traffic. Questions?
Yes, so I understand the comment was that the existing traffic conditions are congested. To address that, I bring to you attention that we're adding two homes and an ADU to this property. The average daily traffic on Mission Drive is well over 1,000. It's probably under 10,000, but it's pretty significant in the thousands, and the project is going to only add maybe 20 to 30 additional trips to that. So it's not significant enough to trigger any mitigations.
Yeah.
And as part of a subdivision, there's no traffic study anyway, right? Just based on?
Again, because it's exempt, there's no traffic study required.
Thank you. I think I marked out all the questions. Was that every question that was answered?
It's my reflection.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I mean, I will say on the traffic, when I went by and looked at the property and I pulled into the dirt part right in front of it, and then there is traffic, and this was in the middle of the day, so not a lot of traffic, but they don't pay attention to look for people coming in or out of there, or out of the side street across the street. But like you say, when I also looked at it and looked at the whole neighborhood, and then looked at what we're changing, that's not going to add that much more traffic to what's already there that was coming up and down the road, so. It was just what I observed when I was out there in the middle of the day.
Is there any Commissioner comments on this item now? Start with Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, on the sidewalk inconsistency, and I know that it's city and county, and the county generally does not build sidewalks in this area, I would encourage some communication between the city and county offices to, in areas where you have city sidewalk, then county no sidewalk, then city sidewalk. So call out the county island areas. It'd be nice to have some communication to see if the sidewalks can be built more consistently. I think it can get confusing to motorists when they, and pedestrians, anyone who uses those roadways to have sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk. But that's just a suggestion. In terms of the project, there's a very creative solution for the setback. Whoever came up with that, that was brilliant. And so, and, and I'd like to see stuff like that. I like, you know, we, the city is very much encouraged to, to add housing and coming up with some creative solutions to where it didn't appear that there was one. I think is, is, is good, nice work between city and applicant, so. I, I appreciate the project, and, and I can support it.
Yeah. Well, once I looked at, you know, what was there and what this is going to be, I think it's going to be a really nice addition and a great way to add some nice yards, nice houses, good-sized lots. My dream house, I think I could build on there, if I had the money to build it, but I can't. And I don't really see that it's going to be a negative for the area at all, so I don't have any problems supporting this.
I don't have any comments. It was very well, very well presented.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, impressive for an intern, I thought, you know.
Thank you.
Intern. Yeah, and I thought was, and again, I, I support the project as well. What I, I kind of thought was kind of nice is they, they could have got four lots out of that, out of the square footage, and opted for the, the three to, to work with it is. So I, I think they'll be nice, larger lots, and it'll be good, but, but I can support it, too. So I guess with that, we will call for a resolution?
Resolution for LD 554, 260 Mission Drive. It's resolution number PC 2024-08. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo approving a request from CCE Design Associates, Incorporated, for a tentative parcel map, subdividing an existing approximately 41,382-square-foot lot into three parcels of 11,800 square feet, parcel one and parcel two, and 17,346 square feet, parcel three, located at 260 Mission Drive in the single-family residential 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size zone, further described as LD 554.
Move to wait for the reading and vote to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Murphy and second by Commissioner Vandermeulen. We'll take a vote, please.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
And Chair Etzel?
Yes. Okay, that passes 4-0 with one absent tonight. So then we just move on to the next item, which is Director's Report.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. We, we don't have any items tracking for the next meeting on July 2nd, so you can look for a cancellation, and maybe a free 4th of July week coming up.
Sounds good.
We do have items tracking for the following meeting on the 16th, so you can expect to have that meeting. And one thing I just wanted to share, we have a couple upcoming policy items. The safety element is something that we're working on, we're still in draft form, but I expect in the next coming months, we'll be able to put a draft in front of this commission for consideration, and following that, we also have the climate action plan that we're working on, we're going to do some additional engagement, but you can look at that coming up, possibly in the, in the wintertime.
Okay, great.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Commissioner comments? I'll start with this end, do you have any comment?
No, it looks like summer's starting off with a bang with the weather, and hope we can all enjoy it, and have a nice, safe, safe summer in the city.
Yeah. How about you, Mr. Murphy? You?
For me, I just want to, it was a great presentation, Ricardo, thank you to the group.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, so, good plan, and thank you for the honor and to be here. And we'll look forward to seeing some progress on there in six or seven or 10 months.
Yeah, thanks for the members of the public that showed, it's always helpful to get, get input and get the questions answered, so. Anyway, so I guess we're in adjournment. Thank you.